All right, good afternoon, everyone. We'll read the open meetings requirements. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on Thursday, August 5, 2021. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be Thursday, October 7, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Conference Room, second floor, at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street, here in Omaha. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Retirement Office at the Teacher Administrative Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a copy of the current -- that a current copy of the Nebraska Opens Meetings Act is posted in the Board of Education room on the North Wall. Cecilia, would you please call the roll?
Bourne.
Here.
Block.
Here.
Erdenberger.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Logan. Six present.
All right, we have a quorum. With that, we'll jump down to Agenda Item Number Two. Agenda Item Two is action on the election of Board Officer for the OSERS Board.
Mr. Bourne, I move that Patrick Bourne be nominated to serve as President of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System Transition Board of Trustees.
Second.
Are there other nominations? Did we have a second? So we have a motion and a second. Again, are there any other nominations? All right. With that, I declare the nominations closed. Cecilia, would you please call the roll for confirmation of Pat Bourne as President?
Logan.
Aye.
Block. Johnson.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Five ayes.
All right, thank you. So it is approved. We'll go to Item Number Three. Cecilia sent out the August 5 regular Board meetings in the package late last week. Are there any amendments or adjustments to the minutes? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I move for the approval of the minutes to OSERS Board Meeting held Thursday, August 5, 2021.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, are there any adjustments, modifications, errors, omissions? Seeing none, Cecilia, would you call the roll for approval of the August 5, 2021 minutes?
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Bourne.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, the meeting minutes are approved. We'll go to discussion on the financial statements from July of 2021.
For the month end, July 2021, the OSERS Trust Fund had a valuation of $1,556,697,000. That represents an increase of approximately 26% from the same time last year. At July 31, the trust fund held -- had cash on hand for administrative purposes of $15,369,000. That ends the financial report for OSERS for month end, July 2021.
Do we have a motion on that? That will have Ice Miller giving update
And is Audra joining us tonight?
She is not. She had another meeting.
Okay. I think you can see the -- you two can see each other. Let me introduce Pat Bourne, the President of the OSERS Board, who is in front of you. And Mr. Bourne.
Good afternoon.
This is Robert.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and Board Members.
This is Robert Louse from Ice Miller.
All right, excellent. Nice to see you, Robert. So there's -- Robert, I don't know if you can see the entire board, but there's six Board members up at the DSCR. And if you could just kind of go ahead and give us an update on the audit, and there'll probably be some questions from the Board. So you take it away.
Sure. And so the audit -- or the update will be very brief. We have an extensive tax compliance review that we have done and is almost finished to submit to Cecilia for her initial review with regard to the plan. And that is coordinated to the proposed amendments that we had submitted to the board rules last month. We also have an operational compliance review and checklist that we have started and will be submitting to Cecilia and the staff in order to work through some of the operations of the plan. And both of these should be to Cecilia next week. And I think, as I had reported last month, given the deadlines for having a first draft of the report to OSERS by early October, with a final draft by the end of October, and recognizing the Board's meetings in relation there, too, we wanted to make sure that, in essence, the draft is well down the road in coordination with Cecilia and the staff prior to the October 6 initial deadline.
All right, are there any questions?
I have a question that may not be for our guest, but could you remind me what the due date, as far as the state of Nebraska is, for us submitting this audit?
Madam Vice President, I believe it's November 15.
All right, any other questions? So, Robert, no impediments, nothing in your way? You're getting all the information that you need timely? Everything's moving forward as it should?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. Last call? All right, thank you, Robert. We appreciate the update and appreciate your work on the audit.
All right, very good. Have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next agenda item, action on the resolution for assigning signatories for OSERS. Cecilia, would you want to go through that resolution?
Certainly. Given the reconstitution of the Board of Trustees that oversees OSERS as a subcommittee of Board of Education, we thought it appropriate to have a new resolution assigning to Board Officers -- assigning Board Officers and a member of staff the authority to sign on behalf of OSERS. And so, as the resolution shows, it is calling for Mr. Bourne, Ms. Erdenberger, myself, and Mr. Ellis to have the authority to sign on behalf of OSERS.
Okay. You've heard the resolution. I'd look for a motion to approve that.
I move the resolution for assigning signatories for the OSERS Trust Fund, naming Patrick Bourne, Jane Erdenberger, Cecilia Carter, and James Ellis be adopted and effective July 1, 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding Agenda Item Number Six? Seeing none, Cecilia, would you call the roll, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Block.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
And Bourne.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, the motion is approved. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, discussion and potential action on the disposition of OSERS Courtesy Fund held at the Omaha Public School Foundation. Cecilia is going to kind of go through what this fund was and the history behind it, and we'll go from there. Cecilia?
In 2015, the former OSERS Board of Trustees established a Courtesy Fund, which was held at the Omaha Public School Foundation in a non-interest-bearing account. And the purpose of the fund was to provide a means of support to pay for such items as like a celebratory dinner, sympathy flowers, memorial donations to former Board of Trustees, and to make sure that we did not use OSERS Trust Fund monies for any of those type of activities. The account currently holds $794.48. There have been no deposits into this count since January 2019. There's been one withdrawal from the account in 2016 for the amount of $50, and that was a memorial -- in memoriam donation to the OEA Retired Scholarship Fund in memory of a former Board Member. So it's my suggestion that we -- this account be closed and the proceeds deposited with the Omaha Public School Foundation for their use towards their mission. And I do want everyone to understand that there will be no favorable tax treatment for any of the Transition Board of Trustees for movement of these funds from the restricted account to the Foundation's General Fund.
Excellent. Are there questions for Cecilia? I've got a real quick question. So Cecilia, the money came from former Board Members to this fund to be used for flowers or
Correct.
bereavement things? So it's -- again, it was money donated by former Board Members?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Spencer.
Yeah, thank you, President Bourne. So following on that, then, is there -- I guess, instead of putting the money in the Foundation General Fund, is there a fund that might be more appropriate for the original purpose of the donations? You know, like a memorial fund or scholarship fund or something like that?
I guess if the Board wanted to, they could donate it to the OEA Retired Scholarship Fund. We could -- I could come back with several suggestions, but I figured just turn it over -- since the money is there, turn it over to OPS Foundation and let them serve out their mission with it.
Yeah, it's not a big sticking point for me either way. I just wanted to ask, so thank you.
All right. So I guess what we do is we're going to look for a motion to dispose of those funds in an appropriate way. And so Spencer, if you wanted to, you know, do something in that regard. Otherwise, we'll -- I guess we'll just look for any -- whatever motion. I think the idea is to clean up the fund. Okay.
I move the Transition Board of Trustees authorize the OSERS Board Secretary to dissolve the OSERS Courtesy Fund held at the Omaha Public School Foundation and execute all documents necessary to execute this motion, the proceeds of which are to be transferred to the Foundation's General Funds.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion about the funds, where they came from, where they're headed? Okay. Cecilia, I'd look for you to call the roll.
Block.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Bourne.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, it is approved. So Cecilia, we'll go ahead and get that fund transferred over to the Foundation. Agenda Item Number Eight, discussion on the regular interest for fiscal year 2022.
Okay.
Cecilia?
Let's see. The statutory definition of regular interest is defined in Nebraska Revised Statute, Section 79-978, subsection 30. And it is defined as the rate to which the member is credited on their total employee contribution as of the prior close of the last preceding fiscal year. The fiscal year ends August 31, 2021, and it's compounded annually. But the rate that we use is set by statute, and it shall be equal to the daily Treasury yield curve for the one-year Treasury security as published by the Secretary of the Treasury of the United States on September 1 and September 1 of each year. So for September 1, 2021, the rate is seven basis points. The rate will be prorated across the next 12 months, September 1 through August 31, and will basically be spot 0058 per month. So to give everyone an example and put it in perspective, for a member who has an account balance of $50,000 at the end of August -- as of August 31, 2021, the total interest contribution for the year will be $35, but it will be spread out over 12 months, or basically $2.92 per month for non-retired members throughout the rest of fiscal 2022. That means if someone retires before the end of the fiscal year, they stop accruing the $2.92. I think that explains it. Any questions?
Okay. Again, that was just for information only, so are there
Oh, yeah.
Any questions for Cecilia? Seven basis points. Next agenda item is discussion on Board of Education -- Board Education or Travel. There's an NCTR Annual Conference coming up. Cecilia is going to talk a little bit about the organization, the conference itself. The only action would be needed is if a Board Member wanted to attend, and then we would have a motion and approve that for Board Member attendance. But again, with that, Cecilia, if you kind of give the background on NCTR, the annual conference, what kind of agenda is proposed for that meeting? And we'll just kind of have a discussion on what it is.
Certainly. NCTR stands for National Council on Teachers Retirement. This is their annual conference, and it will be virtual. NCTR is a group -- organization comprised of pension plans and pension-related associations from all 50 states, plus the political subdivision plans, such as ourselves, Omaha. Their conference this year is $500 per person. Again, it's virtual. It's three days, from October 11 through the 14th. The agenda this year is -- I do want to note, the theme of this year's agenda is more investment-focused. Particularly, everything is on asset allocations, how to deal with asset allocations, how this impacts the actuary, how to think about asset allocation for different asset classes. I don't know that this year would be the year that OSERS Board of Trustees could find much benefit out of it. I think they've had other conferences more geared towards administration that our Board could have gleaned more education out of it. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for Cecilia and the NCTR or the annual meeting? Are there any of the Board Members that have a desire to attend? Okay. Since no one's going to -- no one has a desire to attend due to the agenda, we won't need to make a motion to approve that travel. So again, we'll just have Agenda Item Nine as discussion only. With that, we'll jump down to -- Agenda Item Number 10, the annual meeting resolutions. Cecilia, would you kind of talk about what those are and then talk about why we won't need any type of motion on this agenda item?
Certainly. Since no one is attending, we won't be able to vote. But just to give the Board an overall, periodically, they do go through their principles and positions and just update them for, you know, the changing times. But this year, there's an addition of a diversity, equity, and inclusion as a new principle or -- yeah, a new principle for the organization. They have a new Executive Director. That Executive Director came on July 1, 2021. I do believe that there is a sincere desire to become more conscious of the DNI or the diversity, the equity, and inclusion within the organization. Does the organization need to be more mindful of the vendors that are participating in the organization's conferences? So that is what they are gearing themselves towards for 2021 and going into 2022.
So as non-attendees, we can't vote. But as Members of the NCTR, is there any value in submitting a letter or something to, you know, support for the resolution? Or kind of -- I'm not really that -- I've never been to one of their annual meetings. I'm kind of looking for some direction. I mean, is it -- again, I recognize we can't vote because we're not attending, but as dues-paying Members, is there an opportunity to, you know, send a letter or voice support or?
I certainly would think that the incoming Executive Director would appreciate if we so desired to do that.
I don't think we would need any kind of motion or anything on or approval for that. I think -- is that correct, Cecilia?
Correct.
Okay. So unless there's an objection, I think what we'll do is just, you know, voice support for that resolution that's going to be voted on by those in attendance in October. So, okay. Any further questions for Cecilia about the resolution or the organization itself? All right, seeing none, we'll jump down to the Executive Director's report. Cecilia?
All right. With the closing of fiscal year 2021, we are now concentrating -- and when I say "we," the OSERS staff and OPS Accounting are now concentrating on the audit of the OSERS financial statements, which will be due for filing with the state by early November and will be reported to the OSERS Board and the Board of Education in December. The OSERS Audit Committee, which will -- more details to come. But the OSERS Audit Committee will be asked to meet with Simon Johnson in a separate committee meeting at the start of the audit and then at the finish of the audit before it's presented to the Board. Next item, staff -- OSERS staff met with NPER's IT staff for a quick meet and greet via video conferencing. We did realize most of us didn't know each other already, getting ready for the IT part of this transition to NPERs. I continue to meet with NPER's Executive Director to share -- which we share with each other items of interest pertaining to the transition. Followed up -- yeah, following up -- followed up in August with NPERs, following their Board meeting to see if they issued their RFP for a consultant for this -- to help them with this transition. And they're still awaiting information from the Nebraska Department of Administration. But Mr. Gurke and I are keeping each other abreast of important items that come up as they come up and just make sure he has a file as well. So for instance, our application of regular interest is different from theirs. So this particular memo, I just made sure that they got a copy of it and told them to just put that in their files. It will be part of the documented transition, but just so they have an idea of some of the things we're doing. In August, I met with the Omaha Area Retired School Employees Association to give an update on OSERS and the changes pursuant to LB 147. Work that is going on within the office, the rollover letters and the term vested letters for those who separated from OPS at the end of the 2021 school year went into the mail this week. And these are individuals who separated from service and were reported to the Board of Education at the June 7, 2021, through the July 2021 school Board meetings. For people who separate at the end of the school year, we always hold back and wait until the start of the new school year just to make sure that some of these individuals have not returned, even though they separated at the end of the school year. The rollover letters are to those who have less than five years of OSERS service, thus they are not vested. And there were 254 letters that were sent out. The term vested letters, those who have more than five years with OSERS service and thus are vested and entitled to a benefit at some future date, those letters totaled 186. This batch that went out included the new Board policy and all the changes, which means that they were made aware of the four-month waiting period and the requirement that if they return to work within six months, there is an expectation that they repay the refund that they received. It is noted in the cover letter and on the distribution form itself and put into bold. So therefore, we -- normally, we would -- or historically, we would have higher refund months in October and November. And because of the four-month wait period, it'll be pushed till December and January. On another note, the district deposited the fiscal year 2021 actuarial required contribution, affectionately known as the ARC, in the amount of $24,144,826. That is $1,945,199 more than was required of the ARC from our January 1 actuarial report. So that basically equates to a 9% additional ARC contribution to the OSERS Plan. So on behalf of the OSERS Plan Members, we thank the district for the additional contribution. Generally speaking, the -- one other thing. The October Board Meeting will include the following presentations, just to give people some insight. Kavanaugh McDonnell will present the economic assumptions associated with the experience study. At the end of the presentation, if the Board is comfortable, we may even vote on the assumption recommendations. And remember, if we do vote in October, it could even be put off till November because the assumption changes will not take effect until January 1, 2022. In addition to the -- in the October meeting, I will ask the Nebraska Investment -- State Investment Officer, Mr. Michael Walton Newman, to attend via video conferencing, one, to meet this new Board, and to present the OSERS portfolio update for the period ending June 30, 2021. That ends the Executive Director's report. If there are any questions?
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. Could you do that $21 million number again very slowly so I can write it down?
The ARC?
Yeah, sorry.
$24 million?
Oh, see? I didn't even get the second number right. Thank you.
And there was some change.
And could you tell me what that is? How much that exceeds the required ARC by -- again?
Sure. That is $1,945,199.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
And just that was 9% more than what was required.
You made mention of the letter that went out to the people that have left our employ and the -- with the heads-up about how long they have to not work, otherwise they get their -- and I'm just -- I just want to make sure, has that been updated or did that have to be updated to reflect the new legislation that permits substitute teaching sooner than it used to be?
That is on the HR side, That is, that is on the HR side, so we're monitoring it, but HR is fully aware of the new legislation and when a person is eligible to come back and not be required to do the payback.
So this doesn't apply to substitute teaching, is what you said?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And one last question. You referred to the fact that when people leave our employ, sometimes you hold a little bit back in case they change their mind, basically?
No, what I was trying to express was, when people leave at the end of the school year...
Yeah.
Generally, we generate the letters 30 days after date of separation, except for the end of the school year, because people have, well, some people will come back. They'll separate the end of the school year and then reapply and come back August. So, to avoid us sending out that letter and then having to catch them, we just wait that one extra month and send it out 60 days later.
My question was gonna be kind of in anticipation of when NPR's is in charge of all of this. I recognize it's their administrative problem, not ours then, but do you anticipate that they will kind of, or do they just move slowly enough in the first place? Okay, never mind, forget I asked, thank you.
Ms. Block?
My question is in reference to the employees that have separated from the district. Is there any exception if they return and do a minimum of 20 hours per week or anything like that, where they would not be required to pay back the portion of the pension that they have started to earn?
There is no exception in the policy. Now, there is, there is a provision that if it's... If it is financially challenging for the person to pay it back, we can work out a payments schedule, and we'd have to look at those one-on-one.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Cecilia, you mentioned speaking to the retirees and, you know, going back to the Better Together Coalition, some of the documents that were generated by them early on, there's some differences between how NPR administers their plan and how we do, and I don't know if they're substantive or not, but are there other ways? I assume, I assume we have a communication plan to make sure there's no surprises with our members about, you know, this is gonna change, or that might change, and kinda, you know, maybe do some education in that regard. Are we, is your meeting with the retirees in that spirit? Or are we thinking about if we're gonna communicate any of this, or...
Well, yes, more closer to 2023, 2024. But it's funny you did ask me that, because there was a question with the retirees whether the pay statements would continue. And we know that that is a subject that is near and dear to their hearts. And I did have to answer that, at this point, I do not know whether NPR's will continue with their pay statements, but it is something that I put down as a, okay, to be asked and let NPR's decide.
I think I should know this, but I don't, what, the pay statements, is that what you said?
Yes.
And what is that, you're not talking about, what is a pay statement?
Okay. Just as an active employee receives a pay stub, a pay statement, it depends... There are 3,000, I believe was the number, retirees that still receive a paper pay statement on a monthly basis. Anyone who retired January 1, 2015, to date, has access to view their pay statement online. Anyone who retired prior to that is receiving a paper statement.
I know this is strictly administrative. Have we offered them the opportunity to stop getting paper and do it online?
We investigated that, and the cost is prohibitive.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, additional questions? Seeing none, anything additional, Cecilia, on the Director's report?
That ends the Executive Director's report.
Excellent, thank you. So Agenda Item Number 12, for the new board members, this is kind of our opportunity to, if we've attended a conference or read an article, just kinda, you know, bring each other up to speed on anything that might be new or relevant or something that you feel that the rest of the board should know about. So, this opportunity, if there's any trustees that have anything they wanna share? All right, seeing none. We'll move to Agenda Item 13, discussion and potential action on the payroll, retirements, deaths, refunds, and AP.
Okay, for the month of September, the pension payroll was $11,529,382, paid to 5,249 payees. For the month of September, the pension payroll... The staff payroll was $32,300. For the month of September, there were 14 new retirements, adding $26,985 to the monthly pension payroll. For September, we removed nine pension payments due to the death of the retiree. We continued to adjoint survivor annuitant for two retirements due to the death of their retirees. And we ceased payment to one set of beneficiaries who received the remaining payment on a term certain annuity. In aggregate, we ceased payment of $22,398, but we continued survivor annuities in the amount of $3,312 for a net reduction to pension payroll of $19,086. For the month of September, we will process nine refunds, those are the requests for distributions, for a total of $184,545. Our account payables for the month of September are $4,075, and it is to our auditor, Simon Johnson. It is the first of four payments for their audit services. That ends the payroll report.
Okay, thank you, Cecilia. Look for a motion on the payroll report?
I move the Board of Trustees approve the report of pension, payroll, staff payroll, retirements, deaths, refunds, and account payables for the month of September as described.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the report? Seeing none, Cecilia, would you please call the roll?
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
And Bourne?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, it is approved. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 14, adjournment, unless there's anything additional from the board, or Cecilia?
Nothing, nothing for me.
Excellent, all right, we stay adjourned, thank you.